My voice speaks my choice. Every day, week, month, or year, one thing is clear. My vote, my vote is my voice. Oh, I said my vote is my voice. My voice speaks my choice. Every day, week, month, or year, one thing is clear. My vote, my vote is my voice. What an opportunity in this land of the free. I've got something to say. I need to speak it today. My voice is important, needs to be heard. One thing I know will speak louder than words. My vote is my voice. My voice speaks my choice. Every day, week, month, or year, one thing is clear. My vote, my vote is my voice. For those I love, I want a better life. More peace, let's try. My voice will speak for me. My investment in what I hope to see. My vote is my voice. My voice speaks my choice. Every day, week, month, or year, one thing is clear. My vote, my vote is my voice. Hey, and my voice speaks my choice. Every day, every week, month, or year, one thing is clear. My vote, my vote, my vote is my voice. Yeah, speaks my choice. Hey, every day, every week, every month, or year, one thing is clear. My vote, my vote, my vote is my voice. Hey, it's my choice. It's my voice. It's my choice. It's my voice. My vote, my vote, my vote, my vote, my voice is my...
How you doing? I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, First Vice President of the Atlanta Chapter of the NAACP. You've heard the history, the illustrious history of Atlanta. Whether it was Dr. Martin Luther King Senior, whether it was John Dale Johnson, whether it was Julian Barnes. Well, now you can be a part of making that next step in history by joining the Atlanta NAACP. Because we are on the forefront of movement. We've been on the forefront of movement for 100 years, and we will change the shape of this city. So join us, our legacy of civil rights and the future of social justice. Join the Atlanta NAACP. We need you to be a part of the change.
I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. The Georgia NAACP needs a financial restructuring. I'm just the guy who can do it. We haven't had a financial report since 2014. I've been a CPA since I was 24 years old. I know I can do the job. I'm ready to do the job. I ask for your vote.
As part of the Vax Up Atlanta mission to get people vaccinated and stomp out misinformation about the vaccine, the Atlanta branch of the NAACP partnered with the Pan-Hellenic Greater Atlanta Divine Nine for their annual 5K Walk Run. Over 600 people registered for this event, and along with our many partners, including Fulton County COVID-19 Vaccinations Vax Up, we were able to vaccinate 45 adults and 15 young adults. This annual event held each year attracted people from all across the country. Way to go NAACP Atlanta, getting our people vaxxed up.
Hi, I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. We're standing here at Stone Mountain, Georgia, the largest shrine to white supremacy in the history of the world. All over the news today, we see that there's a big lie. The big lie is that Donald J. Trump claims that the election was stolen from him. But actually, the really big lie is about Stone Mountain, is about the Confederacy. The really big lie about the Confederacy, that the Confederate States of America was formed because of states' rights, because of tariffs. But in fact, the Confederate States of America was formed in order to have a country that maintained African chattel slavery. So where'd they get this idea from? They didn't have to go far, because there was already a precedent. The precedent was Texas. Texas was a part of the country of Mexico, which had freed itself from Spain in 1821. And in 1829, the governor of Mexico said to those landowners in Texas, "You have to stop this slavery." It abodies slavery in all of its territories, which included Texas, which was really North Mexico. And so what Texas decided to do in 1834 was to separate itself. The landowners got together, brought arms to an army or rebellion, and they decided that they must separate from Mexico using the Rio Grande as its southern border in order to maintain the institution of African slavery. So the rest of the southern states didn't have to go far, because Texas had separated itself in order to maintain African slavery. It joined the Union under the premise that they could continue enslavement of Africans in perpetuity. In perpetuity meaning the father, the sons, the wives, the daughters, and their sons and daughters. And so Texas joined this Confederate States of America. They were one of the first seven states that seceded from the Union in order to maintain chattel slavery, in order to maintain institutional slavery based on race, period. Their only rationale was race, and that was that they claimed that Negroes, that Africans, were inherently inferior to white people. So the Confederate States of America didn't have to go far. They had seen a precedent, and they adopted this precedent. That is the big lie that continues today, perpetrated by the Sons of Confederate Veterans, by the United Daughters of the Confederacy, and at Stone Mountain, Georgia, the largest shrine to white supremacy in the history of the world.
The conservatives want to preserve the ways of the Old South. They want to preserve the rights of the police to take black lives unpunished, to shoot it unarmed. They thought he had a weapon. Prosecutors want to excuse white men who surround and murder a black jogger in their pickup trucks, flying the Confederate flags, claiming citizens arrest. Show them that black lives do matter. Vote your voice. This message is brought to you by the NAACP Black Voter Turnout Collaborative.
Hey, I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. I have with me today Gerald Griggs. He's our First Vice President, and I recruited him more than seven years ago when he was speaking at a conference about police brutality. I said, "Come on, let's work with the NAACP. Let's do some real trouble. Let's get in real trouble." We've been working together since then. I'm recommending Gerald for President of the Georgia NAACP, which needs restructuring, reinvigorating, a new spirit of activism. I think Gerald Griggs can do it. I'm gonna help him, because I'm running for treasurer. We are running as a team. Join us in reinvigorating, restructuring, reimagining, and making the Georgia NAACP a force in this state and in the South.
Hey, this is DC with the NAACP. Out here today getting COVID tested and getting me a booster.
Hi, I'm Dee Miller with the NAACP Atlanta Branch, and we are out here doing voters' registration today. All hands on deck with our community partners. We're registering people to vote. This is an important election. We need to make sure that the voters have their cards and that all the information is correct and coincides with their ID and just to meet the basic requirements for Senate Bill 202.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lenora Coleman, President and Founder of Total Lifestyle Change and Healing Our Village. We were here today with the NAACP Atlanta doing blood pressure checks, COVID testing, and COVID vaccinations. It's been a great event. We'll keep on our website, which is www.tlc-global.org for the next event.
Just got swabbed for COVID rapid test. It was easy, fast, and I enjoyed it. I'm negative, man. I just got my test results back. I'm negative, COVID negative. Now that I've tested negative, it's time to get the shot. I took it like a real champ.
Hey, this is Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. Wish you would've been here today in Rodney Cook Junior Park. We had free vaccine for COVID. We got free testing. We got hot dogs and games for the kids. We got voter registration for the adults. It's been a great day. Come and join us on October 16th at Greenbrier Mall at the Mason's Park Lot. We'll be doing it all over again. In 2019, 15,633 more Americans died than in 2018. From 2019 to '20, the differential was 503,000. The leading black Georgia funeral home reported their business increased in 2020 by more than 30%. I am glad to have not been one of them. As soon as a proven vaccine was available, I took the shot. Each of the three vaccines on the market is more than 90% effective. One was developed by a black woman, Dr. Kizzi Corbin. Protect yourself, your associates, and your loved ones. Don't be in that funeral home statistic. I'm Richard Rose, President of NAACP Atlanta, which has championed civil rights since 1917. I vote, I'm active in my community, and I've been vaccinated. I urge you to join me in all three. Vax up, take the shot.
As part of the Vax Up Atlanta mission to get people vaccinated and stomp out misinformation about the vaccine, the Atlanta branch of the NAACP partnered with the Pan-Hellenic Greater Atlanta Divine Nine for their annual 5K Walk Run. Over 600 people registered for this event, and along with our many partners, including Fulton County COVID-19 Vaccinations Vax Up, we were able to vaccinate 45 adults and 15 young adults. This annual event held each year attracted people from all across the country. Way to go NAACP Atlanta, getting our people vaxxed up.
How you doing? I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, First Vice President of the Atlanta Chapter of the NAACP. You've heard the history, the illustrious history of Atlanta. Whether it was Dr. Martin Luther King Senior, whether it was John Dale Johnson, whether it was Julian Barnes. Well, now you can be a part of making that next step in history by joining the Atlanta NAACP. Because we are on the forefront of movement. We've been on the forefront of movement for 100 years, and we will change the shape of this city. So join us, our legacy of civil rights and the future of social justice. Join the Atlanta NAACP. We need you to be a part of the change.
Hi, I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. At a recent board meeting of the Stone Mountain Memorial Association, which is the governing body of Stone Mountain Park, a member of the Sons of the Confederate Veterans claimed that Stone Mountain Park is a memorial to the 50,000 Georgia soldiers who lost their lives in the war. That is another iteration of the big lie. The war against the United States of America was created, was started in order to maintain the institution of African slavery, of chattel slavery based on race alone. At this park, this is called the Historic Town Square, which includes slave cabins imported from somewhere in Georgia, but were never here, never at Stone Mountain. It is to represent the idyllic view of antebellum South, to say, "This is how we want it to be. We want to return to the days where Africans were accorded second and third-class citizenship in America that included chattel slavery based on race in perpetuity."
Let me be frank. The conservatives want to preserve the ways of the Old South. They want to take us back before Brown versus Board of Education, before the Montgomery Bus Boycott, before the Birmingham Student Movement, before the Freedom Riders, and before the Selma March where John Lewis and others were brutalized. For 111 years, the NAACP has fought for your right to vote. Exercise that right. Vote your voice. This message is brought to you by the NAACP Black Voter Turnout Collaborative.
Hi, I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. In general, the offices and leaders of local NAACP branches serve without compensation. But there is a cost of everything, even if you don't pay it. We need offices and communication systems and materials and staff. They answer daily calls citing racial discrimination in the justice system, employment, health, and housing. Annual adult membership is only $30, but that's not enough. Please subscribe to one of our annual supporter packages starting at $100 that includes membership. We can do more if you join and support the Atlanta NAACP. Go to our website, naacpatlanta.org, or follow the link in this message. The community needs you and the NAACP. Hi, I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. To my right, you see the largest shrine to white supremacy in the history of the world, the carvings on the side of Stone Mountain. But the Stone Mountain Memorial Association wants to dilute this message. There's a dinosaur land, there are golf courses, there's a boat ride on a huge lake. There are other attractions, including a skyride to the top of the mountain, all designed to dilute the message of white supremacy on which this mountain and this park is based on. Georgia bought this park in 1958 because it had been a meeting place, an annual rally point for the Ku Klux Klan, where they burned crosses and some say threw black people over the side of the mountain after having lynched them. This is Stone Mountain, the largest shrine to white supremacy in the history of the world.
The conservatives want to preserve the ways of the Old South. They want to continue to uphold police brutality to maintain a system that traps black families in poverty. They cut funding for education and at the same time spend millions maintaining the white supremacy messaging of Confederate monuments. They mistreat us with our own tax dollars. Refuse to be mistreated. Show them that black lives matter. Vote your voice. This message is brought to you by the NAACP Black Voter Turnout Collaborative.
How you doing? I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, First Vice President of the Atlanta Chapter of the NAACP. You've heard the history, the illustrious history of Atlanta. Whether it was Dr. Martin Luther King Senior, whether it was John Dale Johnson, whether it was Julian Barnes. Well, now you can be a part of making that next step in history by joining the Atlanta NAACP. Because we are on the forefront of movement. We've been on the forefront of movement for 100 years, and we will change the shape of this city. So join us, our legacy of civil rights and the future of social justice. Join the Atlanta NAACP. We need you to be a part of the change.
In 2019, 15,633 more Americans died than in 2018. From 2019 to '20, the differential was 503,000. The leading black Georgia funeral home reported their business increased in 2020 by more than 30%. I am glad to have not been one of them. As soon as a proven vaccine was available, I took the shot. Each of the three vaccines on the market is more than 90% effective. One was developed by a black woman, Dr. Kizzi Corbin. Protect yourself, your associates, and your loved ones. Don't be in that funeral home statistic. I'm Richard Rose, President of NAACP Atlanta, which has championed civil rights since 1917. I vote, I'm active in my community, and I've been vaccinated. I urge you to join me in all three. Vax up, take the shot.
You who are here, say a welcome to the most...
You who are here, say welcome to the Most Worshipful Prince of Our Grand Lodge, 7340 Open National. My name is Matthew Lewis. I will be representing the Most Worshipful Grand Master, the Honorable Corey of the jurisdiction of Georgia. We'd like to welcome you today to this suspicious occasion to express your ideals and your platforms. And again, the Grand Lodge of Georgia welcomes you. If there's anything that we need to do, just give us a buzz. We'll return your call within the next 60 days. I see somebody's paying attention. And again, we just say thank you and welcome to our facilities. If there's anything that we can do for you, please let us know. Again, on behalf of the Most Worshipful Grand Master, the Honorable Corey Shatford Senior, the Eighteenth Grand Master of the Most Worshipful Prince of Our Grand Lodge of Georgia, we bid you welcome.
Good evening. I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. We want to welcome our viewers across the state and probably and across America wherever you are. And we want to thank these candidates who have volunteered for public service. Public service is, can be thankless, but is important. And we want the public, the voters, to listen, to hear them, so you can determine who you want to represent you in these posts. Our moderator this evening is Michelle Taylor Willis, who's the CEO of Gagnant Media and also publisher of South Fulton Lifestyle Magazine. She's a graduate of University of Florida and a member of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, a wife and a mother of four boys. Michelle.
Can you guys hear me? Hi. All right, guys, so this is going to be fun tonight. It's going to be informative, but if you guys have heard me speak before, you know I kind of like to keep it lively. So is everybody ready to have a good time? Yay. It's funny, I'm looking at a camera and all of you are behind me. I'm not quite...
Yeah, you're good.
All right. So at this point, I'm going to introduce our candidates. And so candidates, I'll say, when I say your name, then you come up on set and just take a seat. And once that happens, I'll give you a minute each to introduce yourselves. All right, so for our District Four council seats, we have Elise Fisher. Naima Gilard, who to stay extra safe from COVID, has decided not to be present here, but it's only because she just wants to take extra precautions to be safe with COVID. Arnold A. Jigetz. Mel Keaton. J.C. Sebastian. J.C. T. Sebastian. And David Lee Williams. Awesome, and welcome all of you. And actually, since you were the last one to come up, David, I'm going to pitch it to you first. And so you all will have one minute. Do you have the time? Where are the timekeepers?
Behind you.
Oh, okay. So you will have one minute to introduce yourselves, and we are going to keep you at time in the introductions and in your answers. And I know I look really nice and sweet, but I will cut you off. Okay? Just in the interest of time and to make sure we keep it fair and safe with everyone. Is that good? All right. David?
Hey, I'm David Williams. I'm from Atlanta. I'm a veteran. To me, it's about duty. In my life, I serve my country, and when I do something, I commit to it, and I believe in duty, getting the job done. A lot of times in life, we get a job just to have a job. That's, I'm not the case. Me is to get something done to help people. I'm that guy who called me, you got a flat on the side of the road, I'm coming to help. I don't mind getting my hands dirty. I was a PTO President for Main Street Academy for four years. I'm just a hometown guy, and I like the hometown spirit.
Awesome, thank you, and thank you for staying under time, David. All right, J.C. T. Sebastian.
Good evening, everyone. My name is J.C. Sebastian. First of all, I want to thank the NAACP and the Divine Nine for hosting this forum. It's the first in-person forum we have had. I've been a resident of the Cedar Grove Community for 16 years now, and almost from the day I got there, I've been working in my community. As a matter of fact, I've served in Chief of Staff for Fulton County Commissioner, I was a member of the Cedar Grove Community Association, and also I worked with folks like Roger Bruce and Don Zeller James in creating the city of South Fulton. I'm very familiar with the issues involved, and so that's why I decided to put my hat in the ring to be the City Councilperson for District Four in this election. Thank you.
Mel?
Good evening.
Good evening. It's on the side. Like right here? No, on the side.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Mel Keaton. I am running for District Four, City Council. I am a... Okay. I'm, I am an engineer. I'm an engineer for the Cal County Government. I work in construction, watershed, and GIS. Been in the city for over 40 years. I'm a long-term citizen. Think I have good vision and good ideals for the city. I am a public servant. I have been doing public service for a very long time in the city, and I really, I really want to continue being a public servant for the community as I do now, so we can make some changes to move the city forward and get the citizens the things that they need and make the city more profitable.
Awesome, thank you, Mel. Arnold? Does your mic not work?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us this evening and all of the presenting organizations. My name is Arnold Jigetz. You can refer to me as AJ. I'm a long-term resident here in the city of South Fulton, District Four. I'm a graduate of Shaw University in Raleigh, North Carolina, where I was made in the Beta Row Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. I'm in this race because there's a complete disconnect in the delivery, delivery of services in our district and the leadership. I understand what the needs of the people are. I have the resources and the capability to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold. Elise?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elise Fisher. I've lived in District Four since 2016. I am a proud member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and so let me also say thank you to the National Panhellenic Council and the NAACP of Atlanta. I am in this race because there is a dearth of leadership in District Four, and we experience that, the failures of that absence every single day. I have been active in planning, zoning, public safety, economic development since I moved into the city of South Fulton, and I want to make sure that District Four gets more.
Awesome, thank you. All right, we're going to start with the questions now, and I'm going to start with just a general question, just to get you guys warmed up. Okay, a second. Before your candidacy was declared, please share two actions you have taken to make South Fulton a better place to live, work, or life. And J.C., won't we start with you?
Thank you, Michelle. Well, two actions, creating the city of South Fulton, that's number one. But also, 2020 was very difficult for the world and for us as a city and as a state and a region. And because there was not much happening in my area, sometimes in District Four, you know, we live in big houses and people think that there are no needs there. And so out of my own resources, I started to do, you know, food giveaways and book bag giveaways and community cleanups, because there are needs there in District Four. And we have had a lack of leadership over these last four years, and so those are just a few of the things that I can mention that I've done in District Four.
Great, thank you. Arnold? You don't want that accounting is your time?
No, don't count my time. So early this year, I started a home-based business network where we hosted the Home-Based Business Expo. As a small business owner, I completely understand the needs of business owners, specifically home-based business owners, trying to recover from what COVID has done to our community. I did that. We serviced about 30 entrepreneurs in our community here in the city of South Fulton. Additionally, well before I decided to run for District Four, I started a program to fight obesity in girls. It's called Little Peach's Kickball. We serviced over 150 girls in our community, where we saw these young girls find all of the life skills and social skills afforded to young people, as there's an absence of opportunities like those in our district and in our city. Thank you.
Awesome. Elise?
Thank you. Again, I've been active in the city and the district since 2016, when I first moved here. I moved here in March. By May, I was on the board of the Cedar Grove Community Association. I helped coordinate and execute the city's very first mayoral candidate forum, the city's very first district person candidate forum. I've hosted dozens of focus groups and best practice sharing and data gathering to make sure that we understood what the members of our community wanted and making sure that we delivered on those things.
Great. Mel?
Okay. I signed a rezoning agreement in the city of South Fulton before the city was a city was actually Fulton County. They created three new subdivisions that made the builder holding to a standard that enabled my community to get control of the HOA and create a new standard for the new builders that are coming into those communities. That was Camden Manor, Sierra Estates, and another one that they are building now currently. Also, painted handicap signs for the people with disabilities, not just in my subdivision, but the subdivision up the street from mine as well, Chestnut Ridge, to make sure that people that are disabled have a place to park. And I did it out of my own pocket, supplied a bunch. I do a lot of things from my heart, and I'm just a public servant through my own finances.
David?
Yeah. But like last year, partnership with a Godfrey Church, where every Tuesday I pick up anywhere from 16 to 27 trays of bread, and I hand out bread to people that need it and families. Every time Councilor Willis had food drive, I volunteered, I was there. Any of the council people that had something, I volunteered, I was there. Also, was HOA President for my neighborhood, and I made sure that the builder followed through with everything he's supposed to do. Also, I coached, and then I partnered with Hoop Nation, where we fund and help non-profit organizations with kids.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so I'm going to move to the topic of public safety and crime, because that is at the top of everybody's... Oh, Mel, you didn't like that. This is at the top of pretty much everybody's hit list, right? So let me ask you this question. Do you know at least five members of South Fulton's Police Department, Elise?
Yes.
Can you name them?
I can name Chief Meadows. I can name Captain Toots. The other three, I only know their first names.
Okay, what are they?
There is a Sauror. Oh, I can't think of them. I can name two.
Okay, who are they?
Chief Meadows and Captain Toots.
Got it, okay, awesome. So what have you heard from them about enhancing services for city residents?
Enhancing services for city residents? I have spoken with both of them about two things. One, community policing, and Captain Toots has been phenomenal in helping us address nuisance behavior, both in my subdivision, the Town Creek subdivision, as well as in the Cedar Grove Community District Board at large. And I have heard Chief Meadows speak very often about his beet strategy, and recently I learned that he would be enhancing or increasing the number of beets that will be in the District Four area.
So what do you think about that?
I like the idea of more police presence in our community. Quite honestly, I think the biggest challenges we have, there are, you know, some unfortunate things that people who don't live there come and do in areas where there aren't enough cameras or enough lights to shine on them and make it unattractive for them to go to those places. But once you subtract that piece out, most of what we have is nuisance behavior, domestic violence, the kind of things that happen in a small bedroom community. I will also say that it's my understanding, based on the last report I looked at, that overall crime in our city and in our district is down in the double digits, something like 28%.
Okay, thank you. Arnold, I'd ask you the same, but you must have someone else coming for you to drink a water. So I'm going to ask you the same thing. Do you know five of city of South Fulton?
I do not. The average citizen in our city do not know five police officers' names. I consider it a luxury to not have to, to have not been in a position to have to know five police officers' names. I respect the work that our police force do, but I'll tell you what I have done as it pertains to public safety and not so much. You know the importance of knowing names. I appreciate that question. Some years ago, prior to me running, I hosted the Hate You Give Forum and panel discussion at Langston Hughes High School. The significance of this event was, we surveyed the teachers at Langston Hughes. We had them supply us with students. These weren't your A and B students. These weren't your honor roll students. And we paired them with our city's cadets. The purpose of this was so they could have a conversation. There's no better way than to police our community, other than to connect the people, the police with the students and the people that they'll be policing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you can appreciate, though, that if you're running for public office and crime is a top priority, it would make sense to have some connection to the Police Department or to the officials that are responsible for overseeing public safety and crime. So that's probably the premise of the question, but I appreciate your answer.
Thank you.
Mel?
That's funny. I do know Chief Meadows, who that is, and Captain Toots, because she's, I'm involved in the neighborhood watch, and I know the major. Mine was blank because you asked that up, but I do know the major and two officers I just cannot think. And I am, no crime is good in South Fulton. We recently had an issue with the murder investigation that was actually took place in my community, and the suspect and the person was not from there. But the incident that I had with our community police and with South Fulton was not a good experience for me, and I feel like we can do better in that area, because they dropped a ball on us, and I think that's a training issue, but it's not all officers. We got some good ones too, but I think we need to go back and retrain and see what a disconnect is from with the citizens and the Police Department and understand why and see how we can get this done. And I also think that we should add some departments to, to take away from the officers that have to respond to so many calls that maybe they can, we can add a department that responds to non-emergencies.
So you said you know Chief Meadows, though, right? So what are you hearing from him in terms of how the city is enhancing services around public safety and crime?
I actually plan on speaking to him about that. Like I said, this is, I've spoken to Captain Toots about it. They were supposed to, you know, do some, add more police on the streets right now, but they're struggling right now with hiring staff members to handle all what we have going on. This is a big city, so those are some of the things that I'm hearing from our Police Department. But I plan on speaking with him on Friday. But uh, I plan on speaking with him on Friday at this at this other forum about that.
Okay, thank you, Mel. Jason?
We all know Chief Meadows and Captain Toots. Um, I also know Officer Rogers, Officer Nick Nick Williams, who is our, seems to be our poster boy for the department, and Officer um Solomon Norman. Those are five um of our police officers that I can name off the top of my head.
So what kind of feedback are you getting from them in terms of what they'd like to do differently or what kind of enhancements they're gonna do on the city to address public safety and crime?
As a matter of fact, I've already even started some of that thing as a citizen. Um, the first thing I advocated for my government uh when council was formed was for that precinct in Citi- in Cedar Grove, right? And um, I'd already did my research, you know, I'd spoken to Captain Cotton Toots about the possibility of putting what they call a storefront precinct um in the Cedar Grove community. And I did the research to find out who the owners of the properties were that um were available. And that was important to me because when we lobbied the cityhood, we envisioned hiring three hundred and fifty men and women for the department. I know we know we're near there, but we need to keep pushing the department out into the community, right? Unfortunately, you know, we were a victim of crime um in, you know, during the election, my family was. And so it's also personally important to to me that the police department is also well-supported, you know, well-funded, but at the time, operating in a way in our city that we can always be proud of them.
Thank you, Jason. David?
Yes, but also um Chief Meadows, Captain Toots, which we all know, also Officer Willis. Um, I'm kinda cheating because I go to the police department every Tuesday because I take them bread as well. So I know Williams because I tease him because we got the same last name. And I believe the other guy is strict, Officer Strickland. Um, so I I talk to them every time and I sit down and I talk to them about, I even went there last Tuesday and told them that um I appreciate um the police department because a lot of them, unlike other cities, are nice, friendly. When you have an incident, they come talk to you. We was even out of town one time and they called me on the phone and said my alarm was off. So I have good rapport with them.
Right, so what are you hearing from them and from your perspective in terms of what they want to do to enhance?
Well, like it's some of the same thing we want, you know, response time to be better, more people, better paid. Um, you know, just normal, just to be understood and treated like um citizens.
Awesome, thank you. Um, let me ask you this, and I'm gonna start with you, Jason, on this question. How will you address the rise of sex trafficking and prostitution in commercial areas in the city?
I know there are a couple of bills from the state level. I know Senator Donzetta James, she had worked on a law that allows um these posters to be posted in public places so that if there are people being trafficked, then we can um, they have a place to call, outline, and I think that has been working well. Um, also, I think um Councilwoman Willis, I believe, also um passed a bill at the local level. But you know, it's not just putting the laws in place, but actually do the things and make information more available so that people know how to attack these these problems. We have the airport literally right in our backyard. And my understanding is one of the really hotspots around the country for sex trafficking. So we need to see what we can do, even to work with the airport authority to address this problem.
So working with the airport is more the thing?
Well, see what we can do working with them in order to address the problem in our community. There might be ways that we can work together with those agencies.
Great, thank you. Mel? Yeah, um, how will you address the rise of sex trafficking and prostitution in commercial areas?
I would address it by also working with the solicitor. Right now we have a solicitor in Fulton County, uh Keith Cameron. She's actually, that's one of the big things that he's working on right now. And having those resources available and identifying the spots and and identifying, I mean, talking to people, knowing what is sex trafficking and what it looks like, and educating people on what it looks like so they can call it out when they see it. So those are some of the things that I think that I would do and I I want to do as far as identifying those issues because we also gotta realize a lot of sex trafficking is is homelessness and it is, you know, you have to, I feel like in uh runaways, we have a lot of that going on. So we have to identify that and making sure that we are not someone who's running away that we are and that our baby has a mental issue, a mental issue. We need to make sure that we're giving them the help that they need and the resources that they need so they don't have to do things like that. It's not all about putting people in jail all the time. But we do have to, anybody doing anything criminally with sex trafficking, we have to.
Arnold?
First and foremost, I'm a father of a daughter. Her name is Sydney Reagan Jiggett. And if anyone really pulled my daughter or attempted to pull my daughter into sex trafficking, you wouldn't have to worry about the police first and foremost. Secondly, we need to be proactive and not reactive to these issues. The images that our children see help promote these types of opportunities for sex tra- trafficking to happen. In my household, my daughter started a program at nine years old for girls just like her. And I think what I'm doing in my household to teach my daughter to be independent, to have a positive self-image and a self-image, those are the types of programs we need to promote and partner with our schools to keep the job done. I'm sorry.
Elise?
I I think the one piece that I haven't heard yet, so I'll contribute, is I think that um once we identify where these things are happening, whether it's happening on the streets or happening in the hotel rooms or happening in front of gas stations, that we need to hold those business owners accountable for helping us identify and address. If you see something, say something. Um, and I think the business owners, where some of this behavior is taking place, um, they need to step up and participate as well.
So I wanna piggyback on that. You mentioned accountability, which is big right now, especially as we're dealing in this political environment, right? And a lot of people are saying things stem from leadership. So where do, and you mentioned in your opening statement, I think, that you felt like there'd been an absence of leadership in District Four. So this is for you, but I'm asking all of you guys this. So what do you think about the ramifications of that absence? And then how can people do a better job of holding elected officials accountable so that they do what they say they're going to do when they're on the campaign trail?
Okay, so I I think we we experience the failures all day long, every day, right? If you need to go buy a new business, thirty minute drive. If you need to get to a pharmacy, a twenty-four hour pharmacy, thirty minute drive. At every aspect of life, livability in our district um is in the low forties according to the AARP. The the way we get those things fixed is to begin to create um opportunities for seniors and youth to have places to go, have things to do, um, to get the kind of development that we want in the community uh so that we don't have to drive thirty minutes away to do anything. Um, I also think that we need to do a much better job with making sure that um our public safety folks are responsive, both police and fire. And I believe that a basic readiness to serve scorecard, I'm going back to Six Sigma Process Management, a readiness to serve scorecard would hold people more accountable in all of these spaces.
Thank you. Mel?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, so she mentioned accountability, um, and the absence of leadership in District Four. So what do you think of the ramifications of that absence and leadership? And how can we do a better job of holding elected officials more accountable so that they'll do and execute on what they say they're gonna do when they're campaigning like you are now?
I think we could do a better job at, you know, holding uh our elected official account, our elected officials accountable by setting real timelines and and due dates on some of, a lot of things that they say they're gonna do and that we're gonna do. But if you say you're gonna have this park ready and you're gonna have sidewalks and curbs in and you say that you're gonna put cameras up and whatever you say that you're gonna do, we gotta put real time dates on this stuff and we gotta follow up to make sure that this these things are taken care of because a lot of, a lot of times things just fall through the rug and they get kicked out the curb and nobody's doing anything. And then the citizens feel left out. So what I wanna do is make sure that everybody's getting held accountable and that I'm doing what I'm supposed to do and doing what I say I'm gonna do. So that's why I say.
What about the absence of leadership? Do you feel like there's been an absence of leadership?
Well, you know, I I feel like those kinds of questions divide us and I'm really not, I don't want to divide us and then and talk about somebody or or what they have done or not but because we're trying to build unity right now. So I really would like to just not speak on somebody else's behalf and what they may or may have done, may may have not done because I'm not there right now. But I see what's going on just like everybody else sees what's going on. So I let them make their own decision and make their own, you know, on it.
All right, I'll take that. Thank you. Jason?
Well, I'll tell you what kind of leadership I would provide and how I would hold myself accountable to the people. You know, as I go around District Four, um, not only during the run-up to cityhood, but even now during this campaign, I've talked to many of our citizens. And one of the questions I normally ask them is that, what do you do for a living? And the reason why I ask that question is because my intent is to let the citizens of District Four hold me accountable if I get elected. And the way that I would do that is to establish these subject matter expert groups across the district that would advise me accordingly, as well as to hold frequent public meetings so that the people could come forth and ask me questions. And oh, by the way, my personal cell phone is on all of my literature. So whenever you make that call to that number, it's directly to me.
David, do you wanna chime in?
Um, if you don't mind, I didn't get a chance to answer the question about the sex trafficking.
Oh my gosh, should I skip you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, look at you stepping up. Okay, all right. Thank you, I apologize, please.
No problem. Um, about the sex trafficking, what I would do is utilize the resource you have. That is something that we have in every city and every state. So you get with the local precincts and stuff in each city and you work out a plan to where you can cut it down. If you can cut it down in each city, city by city, working together, then you can get rid of it faster than trying to do it by yourself.
Okay, awesome, thank you. You wanna take this question that I just posed?
Yeah, well, to me, I'm just gonna speak on leadership, period. Being in the military, leadership role is something that um I believe sometimes you're born with, you can't learn it. You gotta have it. And a lot of times, people think they're leaders and they're really not because they're doing day-to-day activities and they think they're doing something. A lot of times, being a leader is being out front, finding what needs to be done, coming up with a plan and fixing fixing the situation or the solution, or finding a solution for it, or knowing who to call to get help from. That's one thing I bring to the table. I don't have a problem calling, finding out who can help and get help.
So since you mentioned leader, you talked about leaders being out front. But what do you think is the biggest quality of a leader as an elected official?
Well, my favorite one is integrity. In the military, we had uh seven codes, okay? Integrity is one of them, honesty is another one, loyalty and respect, and personal courage. Those things you've gotta have in order to get a job done because everybody are not the same. You gotta know, this guy over here may have a college education, you gotta know how to talk to him. This guy over here may just barely made out of high school, so you gotta know how to communicate with that person. You can't always think that you're better than somebody else because somebody's where you can be tomorrow or where you used to be. So you just gotta know how to communicate with people and get the job done and help them in the situation that they're in.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna switch to healthcare. Um, and thank you guys for letting me piggyback on some of your remarks. Um, while COVID nineteen cases appear to be declining, South Fulton was initially a hotspot. What one message do you have for your potential constituents about COVID vaccines?
Michelle, I've I've taken the vaccine and I've um, I've also um been waiting to get my booster shot. I think in order for us to get out of this pandemic, we will need to be vaccinated. You know, I have a mark on my shoulder from a vaccine when I was a kid. I don't even remember what vaccine it was for, but I'm still here. And so I think even though people are saying this thing was a little quick, I think the technology in the vaccines have been around for a while. And with so many people having gotten this vaccine already, if there were things drastically wrong, we would have known by now. So get vaccinated and get us out of this pandemic.
Get vaccinated and get us out of this pandemic. That's the that's the tagline, right? Okay. Arnold?
Simple, I would encourage all my neighbors to get vaccinated. You know, um, I'm here to promote the quality of life for all of the residents in the city of South Fulton, specifically in my district. And part of having and enjoying a good quality of life requires us to be able to get out and be about and enjoy what our city has to offer. We can't do that under the current COVID outbreak. We have to get vaccinated. I would simply encourage my neighbors to get vaccinated.
Do you, go ahead, Mel.
Not only would I say get vaccinated, wear a mask, social distance, I actually last month hosted a vaccine clinic in our community. Uh, brought it right to um a busy little section in our district so that people could drive less than five minutes to come actually get vaccinated.
Got it, so not just talk, put some action behind it, huh? David, do you wanna? I should have gone to you first so you didn't feel like I was skipping.
Um, well, the thirteenth and nineteenth of last month, I hosted David's Care Event, which was a vaccine. I did it Hoop Nation or O-National. Also, I'm one of the few people who called friends to buy getting vaccinated. Cause in two thousand, I got what's called a SARS vaccination, which was a two-shot series. They told us if we go to combat, they can shoot something over the air, drop it down, we're breathing in, respiratory system will go down, you'll be out of the battle for at least ten days. Then two thousand forty, changed it to COVID nineteen. So I tell everybody, it wasn't an overnight thing. It's something that's been on the table. They just have to go back and do a little to it, bring it back. And I took the vaccination. I took my mother-in-law, I took my mother and my wife and my daughter as well.
Thank you. Mel, did you wanna?
I think um, right now I work closely with the CDC with the Cal County. And um, I think we should be following the CDC guidelines as much as recommended, as they recommend. Uh, with with me, I feel like, you know, we gotta be kinda careful when you're trying to control people's and what they put in their body. Everybody has a choice, but we should be safe when we're out here doing whatever we're doing in the city. But you know, I I just don't wanna get into where I feel like I'm trying to control what someone does with their body because then we start getting into things like abortion rights and and a lot of different things and 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 what else are they gonna take? But everybody has a choice to protect themselves. And I think if you feel like that's the right thing for you to do to protect yourself and your family, then you should be doing it. When you're out in public, you should be wearing a mask to protect the family if you not have not been vaccinated. So I feel like it is it's choice and everybody's, everybody's an adult, so, you know, they can make their own decisions.
Thank you, Mel. Be safe. That's your line, right? Okay. Um, let's talk a little bit about economic development because I know it's come up a couple of times on the panel. Small business network and being entrepreneur. Uh, how will you help small and minority businesses emerge from the disproportionate negative impacts of recession and pandemic?
I think the first thing we should do, let me let me just also say that I actually serve on the city's Economic Development Strategy Planning Committee. Um, I also led a economic development committee for District Four back in, I wanna say twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, that timeframe. Um, but I believe the first thing we should do is figure out which businesses we can support in our district. Um, and one of the, one set of businesses I know we can support are all of those businesses that provide services to HOAs, right? We have over thirty HOAs in our district. Every HOA needs a property management company, needs a landscaping company, needs, um, you know, many of them need pool maintenance. And we don't have any of those businesses in our district at all. We have to go outside the district, outside the city.
Got it, so you're saying be intentional about the businesses, the services we know that need to be.
Correct, correct.
And then go and get those and bring them in.
Correct.
Anybody else wanna answer that?
I'll take it. So number one, I'm the only person in this race that's on the Development Authority for our city. I was voted unanimously along with a few other good people to represent our city, which helps for the Development Authority to guide us in how we build and grow our city. I believe I've had extensive training and understanding how we should grow our city through economic development. I've not had a phone call with my representative, or any of them for that matter, about how we can grow and develop in District Four. More importantly, I've already done programming here in District Four that supports small businesses.
Thank you, Arnold. Anybody else wanna take that?
Let me just say, before there was the Development Authority, before we had an Economic Development Department, the very first proposal for economic development that was done in the city of South Fulton, I led a group of volunteers to do it. If we remember the Amazon HQ two headquarters, and we created that proposal, some of you might have seen that it made the news. And we gave it into the city for free. And we gave it into the city for free. That was not so much for us to win, but to let the world know that the city of South Fulton is open for business. And I've continued to work in my community with the small businesses in my area. They have supported a lot of the initiatives that I'm doing. And so small business development is going to be key to our city. We are, we are a city of 107,000 people officially, with more, I believe, because of on the count. And we should maximize the money that turns around in our city. So economic development and small business development is very important to me.
Okay. To me, a lot of times, small businesses are just that. They're small and they're trying to work things out. I think sometimes people, we need together to go in, collecting with a lot of people, a lot of businesses, and sit down and tell them or help them or show them how they can do better. You know, customer service is a major thing. So when customer service is bad in small business, we tend not to go back. So a lot of things that you can point out, and not trying to tell them about what to do, but if you show them that you're helping them where they can do better, then a lot of times it works out for their business as well as the city, as well as the community. Everything has a domino effect. So if you help at the bottom, eventually it'll go into a bigger, better thing.
All right. We've got about 10 minutes here, guys. I'm going to ask one more question and then we'll probably move into closing. Oh, gosh, I forgot, you know, I missed a comeback for you. I had to leave somebody else out, so I'll let him out. Could make it seem like you were personal, you know. Go ahead, Mel.
I actually own a small business, uh, Keating International Home Restoration Company. So I, I feel like, you know, we have to make sure that the grants that we get for the city that help small businesses, that we actually let people know that there, there is funding for small businesses, especially during COVID. And, um, I think we can do a better job of that. And that's something that I would do as a candidate is letting, identifying the small businesses. Identifying the small businesses that we have in the area and giving them what they need and encouraging them to be registered. And sometime before sending those bids out, we should start allowing some of the small businesses to work with the city and letting them know that there's work available.
So I'm going to ask you guys really quickly, just because I'm curious, and I know economic development and small businesses is big. Do you guys know who the Director of Economic Development is for the city of South Fulton?
Yeah.
Yes.
Chris Pike.
I'm Matt Williams.
Okay, awesome.
As a, as a director on the city's Development Authority, I want to, since you introduced us, I want to speak to that, please.
Okay, so hold tight real quick because you, you had your minute to answer already, right? So I've got to move, I just got to move off of this so we can get to the next topic before we close, okay? And your closing statements, though, we can circle back to that. Um, housing and urban development, real quick here, guys. All right, South Fulton's district, South Fulton's Fourth District is recognized for its unique suburban and rural landscape. How will you work with residents to keep this balance in place? Mel?
I would actually, uh, introduce, uh, funding. There's a lot of funding out here for small development and housing. Uh, we, we probably, and I think we should look at working with, uh, Restore Habitat. And there's a lot of other options out here for us. And right now, the builders are struggling as well because of the shortage on, on material right now. So it's, it's a thing for everybody. But we also want to encourage developers who's coming in, who actually want to do business and for low-income housing, to make sure that it's standard, it's a standard to it. It doesn't have to look like a, uh, a house that is, um, low-income. You know, to make sure we get the standard is just the same. So I think we should start working with other vendors as well and introducing those vendors and partnering with those vendors.
So set a standard and then meet it to keep it.
Yes.
Jason, since he brought the question back, I'll come back to you, Elise.
Well, first of all, um, one of the things I intend to do is to really concentrate on protecting the environment of District Four. You know, I've worked before as consultant for the United Nations Environment Program. So I know the devastation that climate change and global warming can have when you remove too many of our trees and all of that. And District Four, you know, we have traditional homes that are non-HOA that are, you know, on large properties. And my intent is to preserve some of those while we still find other areas in District Four where we can grow some, some density. So, so that's one. And we, we also have in District Four, what I call, I don't like low income, I like to call them starter homes, right? Um, because there could be single people who want a home. And in District Four, we do have at least two subdivisions that also have what I would call starter homes in there. So I will continue to promote the development of more home, but also of economic development in Boston.
Elise?
Yeah, so, so the part of this question that I wanted to address, um, yes, what will we be doing to protect the character of the community? Um, I've already been working to protect the character of the community. One of the things I do is make sure that, um, you know, we have three overlays in our community. Overlays are, um, a higher level of standards from a zoning perspective. Um, I have been working for years now to make sure that developers comply with those overlays. Um, I have been working with, um, other community folks to make sure that they understand what's there and that if we need to address an issue, that we address that issue before it becomes something permanent that we have to live with.
Mel? I started with you, didn't I? Yeah. Arnold?
Can you repeat that question again, please?
Yes. South Fulton's Fourth District is recognized for its unique suburban and rural landscape. How will you work with residents to keep this balance in place?
First of all, I'll start with the community. We have the most undeveloped land in the city of South Fulton and in metro Atlanta. And we have to protect the integrity of our area. Simply making sure developers don't come build the type of development and residential housing that we don't want. I agree that we don't need completely low-income housing in our district. I think there's a place for it. We need good starter homes and a good mixture of development and residential development in our district.
David?
Well, pretty much, um, they touched most of the bases, but there's things about, I look at and look at differently because even in my neighborhood, I feed the deer, I feed the squirrels. So to me, our district, we still need to have that type of stuff where we still have animals and stuff, a place for them to go. Um, walk parks, dog parks, those things that we need to do, more or less than building 15,000 more homes. Um, we need things, um, that we can appreciate and enjoy and love in our community and not have to go anywhere else.
Okay, guys, we're going to stop here and I'm going to go ahead and let you guys issue closing remarks. Okay? So I'm going to start here with you, Elise, and then we'll just move on.
Okay. Um, Elise Fisher, I am in this race because, again, I think there's a lack of leadership. And I also in this race is because, um, I think integrity matters. Um, and people have to trust the person that they put in this seat. Um, I have been working since 2016 advocating for this community. I think the role of a councilperson is to advocate, educate, legislate. I've been advocating for this community since 2016. Um, I've hosted a ton of events to help educate folks and understand what it is they want and try to implement the will of what they want. Um, the last thing is legislate. That's where we have the gap and that's where I think I can bring things home for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold?
On November 2nd, it's very important that our citizens get out and vote. I asked for your vote right here this evening to elect Arnold Jiggs for City Council, District Four. I'm running this race because our district, as you have heard, lacks the deliverable of services and we lack leadership. I understand what those problems are, how to solve those problems, and the resources in getting them done. Economic development is a viable tool in our district, in our city. We have to have a holistic mindset. One of the first things I'll do is make sure that we support the number-one tool to help the neighbors get the resources and amenities that they want in our city, and that's our city's Development Authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold.
Uh, yeah, I'm running because I, I have a lot of great ideas. I am, um, like I said, I see a lot of potential in the city. I'm looking forward to getting rid of the trash service and becoming independent of our trash service and bringing that in-house because there's a lot of potential in that. A lot of programs I thought about, and as far as getting pedestrian pathways over the city, over the Old National Highway to keep people from jaywalking is a good idea. I also was thinking about bringing in the Adopt a Brick program where the citizens can be a part of the, the new city center, where they can actually put their name on a brick, which can offset some of the costs on, on the new city center that is at Wolf Creek. So I'm sure I want to bring those new ideas to the city and have a people make, have a people, have a part of that history, make it of that city with their name on it, like they do at, um, Centennial Olympic Park. And also bringing in qualified, uh, workers and bringing those jobs to the city, bringing, getting rid of the...
You know, I've been led along with folks, a lot of citizens, to create the city of South Fulton. I find that it was necessary for me to step up this time and try and become the city councilperson. Um, for me, it was not a difficult decision because I've already been in the community doing certain work that have been lacking in our, in our community. I just want to thank the citizens of District Four who continue to encourage me along the way and who have encouraged me even since the first time around to run for city council. So again, I have to create the city. J.C. Sebastian. So on, starting next Tuesday, early voting, I ask for your vote because I want to continue the work that I started, you know, almost 10 years ago in making our city what we envisioned our city to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Hey, I'm David Williams. I'm not going to bore you and tell you we don't have an urgent care center. I'm not going to bore you and tell you that we don't have a park, or a dog park, or a walking trail, or even a gym in District Four. But what I'm going to tell you if you elect David Williams, I'm going to bring transparency, communication, leadership, and structure to District Four. Thank you very much. Early voting, October 12th.
Thank you, guys. Do you guys want to give your candidates a round of applause? It takes a lot of courage to give up in front of people you don't know and ask, answer questions that you don't know what they're going to be, right? So thank you for your time. And I'm going to pass it back over to Jamal now to close this out. There you are. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I guess I should go to my designated spot. So we want to say thank you so much and what an amazing job you guys have done this evening. You know, there is a saying that many are called, but few are chosen. And you are the few that have been chosen to come out and represent. We really need to give these great people another round of applause. There's just a few housekeeping issues I'd like to speak to. And one of the, we'd like to welcome the city of South Fulton Council members, Mark Baker, District Seven, and Khalid Hamal, District Six. Thanks for coming out. We'd also like to invite everyone to the South Fulton Legends Ball, November 13th, at the Atlanta Airport. And then we'd like to remind you, early voting, it begins on Monday, October 12th, and runs through October 29th. There are 24 locations. Uh-oh. Uh, Tuesday, 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 Tuesday. Uh, the last day to request your absentee ballot is Friday, October 22nd. Candidates and your fellow citizens are counting on you and your vote. Please come out and vote. Finally, I'd like to say thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you to the most worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge of Georgia for allowing us to come. We'd also like to thank the past master, Matthew Lewis, for coming out. We'd like to thank the bad, the bold, the brilliant, Richard Rose, NAACP president. And then a special thank you to what an amazing moderator, Ms. Michelle Willick. Fantastic job. Beautiful. Very impressive. And then the best planning team in the world. You know, a car can't run if the engine doesn't work. And we had the best engine in the building. We'd like to thank Brother Raywood Clinton, who's behind the, behind the scenes, making this thing go. Special thank you to Judge Cassandra Kirk. You make it go every time. Thank you so much. And finally, Ms. Kimberly King. She won't ever stop. She just keeps moving and making it go. Thank you. I'm always reminded of my grandmother when I close because she always says, "Bring a good word, son." A glad heart makes a cheerful conscience. God bless you, Agri.
How you doing? I'm Attorney Gerald Griggs, First Vice President of the Atlanta Chapter of the NAACP. You've heard the history, the illustrious history of Atlanta. Whether it was Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, Senior, whether it was John Dale Johnson, whether it was, uh, Julian Bob. Well, now you can be a part of making that next step in history by joining the Atlanta NAACP because we are on the forefront of movement. We've been on the forefront of movement for 100 years and we will change the shape of this city. So join us, our legacy of civil rights and the future of social justice. Join the Atlanta NAACP. We need you to be a part of... We need you to be a part of the change.
I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. The Georgia NAACP needs a financial restructuring. I'm just the guy who can do it. We haven't had a financial report since 2014. I've been a CPA since I was 24 years old. I know I can do the job. I'm ready to do the job. I ask for your vote.
As part of the Vax Up Atlanta mission to get people vaccinated and stomp out misinformation about the vaccine, the Atlanta branch of the NAACP partnered with the Pan-Hellenic Greater Atlanta Divine Nine for their annual 5K Walk Run. Over 600 people registered for this event. And along with our many partners, including Fulton County COVID-19 vaccinations, Vax Up, we were able to vaccinate 45 adults and 15 young adults. This annual event held each year attracted people from all across the country. Way to go, NAACP Atlanta, getting our people vaxxed up.
Hi, I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. We're standing here at Stone Mountain, Georgia, the largest shrine to white supremacy in the history of the world. All over the news today, we see that there's a big lie. The big lie is that Donald J. Trump claims that the election was stolen from him. But actually, the really big lie is about Stone Mountain, is about the Confederacy. The really big lie about the Confederacy, that the Confederate States of America was formed because of states' rights, because of tariffs. But in fact, the Confederate States of America was formed in order to have a country that maintained African chattel slavery. So where did they get this idea from? They didn't have to go far because there was already a precedent. The precedent was Texas. Texas was a part of the country of Mexico, which had freed itself from Spain in 1821. And in 1829, the governor of Mexico said to those landowners in Texas, "You have to stop this slavery." It abodies slavery in all of its territories, which included Texas, which was really North Mexico. And so what Texas decided to do in 1834 was to separate itself. The landowners got together, brought arms to an army or rebellion, and they decided that they must separate from Mexico using the Rio Grande as its southern border in order to maintain the institution of African slavery. So the rest of the southern states didn't have to go far because Texas had separated itself in order to maintain African slavery. It joined the Union under the premise that they could continue enslavement of Africans in perpetuity. In perpetuity meaning the father, the sons, the wives, the daughters, and their sons and daughters. And so Texas joined this Confederate States of America. They were one of the first seven states that seceded from the Union in order to maintain chattel slavery, in order to maintain institutional slavery based on race, period. Their only rationale was race, and that was that they claimed that Negroes, that Africans, were inherently inferior to white people. So the Confederate States of America didn't have to go far. They had seen a precedent and they adopted this precedent. That is the big lie that continues today, perpetrated by the Sons of Confederate Veterans, by the United Daughters of the Confederacy, and at Stone Mountain, Georgia, the largest shrine of white supremacy in the history of the world.
The conservatives want to preserve the ways of the Old South. They want to preserve the rights of the police to take black lives unpunished, to shoot an unarmed, naked black man claiming they thought he had a weapon. Prosecutors want to excuse white men who surround and murder a black jogger in their pickup trucks, flying the Confederate flags, claiming citizens arrest. Show them that black lives do matter. Vote your voice. This message is brought to you by the NAACP Black Voter Turnout Collaborative.
Hey, I'm Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. I have with me today Gerald Griggs. He's our First Vice President, and I recruited him more than seven years ago when he was speaking at a conference about police brutality. I said, "Come on, let's work with the NAACP. Let's do some real trouble. Let's get in real trouble." We've been working together since then. I'm recommending Gerald for President of the Georgia NAACP, which needs restructuring, reinvigorating, a new spirit of activism. I think Gerald Griggs can do it. I'm gonna help him because I'm running for treasurer. We are running as a team. Join us in reinvigorating, restructuring, reimagining, and making the Georgia NAACP a force in this state and in the South.
Hey, this is DC with the NAACP. Out here today getting COVID tested and getting me a booster.
Hi, I'm Dee Miller with the NAACP Atlanta branch. And we are out here doing voters' registration today, all hands on deck with our community partners. We are registering people to vote. This is an important election. We need to make sure that the voters have their cards and that all the information is correct and it coincides with their ID and just to meet the basic requirements for Senate Real 202.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lenora Coleman, President and Founder of Total Lifestyle Change and Healing Our Village. We were here today with the NAACP Atlanta, doing blood pressure checks, COVID testing, and COVID vaccinations. It's been a great event. We'll keep on our website, which is www.tlc-global.org for the next event.
Just got swabbed for COVID rapid test. It was easy, fast, and I enjoyed it. I'm negative, man. I just got my test results back. I'm negative. COVID negative. Now that I've tested negative, it's time to get the shot. I took it like a real champ.
Hey, this is Richard Rose, President of the Atlanta NAACP. Wish you would have been here today at Rodney Cook Junior Park. We had free vaccine for COVID. We got free testing. We got hot dogs and games for the kids. We got voter registration for the adults. It's been a great day. Come and join us on October 16th at Greenbrier Mall at the Mason's Park Line. We'll be doing it all over again.
In 2019...